I'd like to call it an order in this Montague County Commission meeting of June 28, 2017. Please note for the record that all commissioners are present. If you would, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge the flag.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, again, remind people that we are going paperless, more or less. If you recall, about a year ago, I had a stack of papers about this hot on my desk, trying to private point, prove a point that, you know, going, we're referring here over to the right, we're looking at the computer screen because now everything is on this agenda here. Proceed with the consent and approval. Renetta, good morning.
Good morning. We have nine exonerations for 1,00585. General County vouchers, 360,57868. 911, 46356. Chestnut Ridge Park, 4,13405. Camp Muffley, 13,98710. Mason Dixon Park, 59466. Reallocated coal, 1,057170. Assessor's valuation, 6,0082909. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, 90,19799. 911, 1,024508. Home confinement, 1,043810. Chestnut Ridge Park, 48760. Camp Muffley, 2,0051260. Mason Dixon Park, 3604. Assessor's valuation, 2,07707, for voucher total of 48615332. We have a budget revision for, an in-house budget revision for the prosecuting attorney. Position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Board of Zoning Appeals for the Western Planning District, Planning Commission, Monterey County Historic Landmarks Commission. Fiduciary orders for June 28, 2017. We've got statement of services for George Armstead and Lynn Crane and Cynthia Van Stafford, fiduciary commissioners. And then there's a separate matter that came up yesterday, request for fiduciary hearing in the Mary Rebecca Summers estate. They're requesting July 5 at 10 o'clock.
Move for approval? Second. Been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Regarding the Summers estate, I think we have a motion to set that here.
Move.
We have, it's a, there's-
It's already set.
Oh, it's already set.
No, there's, there's a position of, I mean, we have, we can make room on the schedule for it, so that's fine.
Okay, so move to have the hearing on July 5.
July 5, 10 o'clock or as soon as can be heard after.
Yes.
Second. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded on that hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Introduction of the new employees. I believe we have J.R. Petzko up first, if you would, please.
I must apologize. My new employee is a senior pharmacy student at WU. He had class till 9:45, and he was going to be in a hustle to get here. And apparently, he wasn't able to make it here that soon. But Kevin is a ex-marine, did two tours, very reliable gentleman, and I look forward to having him at the park.
Move for approval?
Second. Been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Welcome aboard, even though he's not here. Okay, Carrie?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I'd like to introduce to you Kayla Johnson. She started with our office yesterday as a full-time position and is in, will be entitled to benefits.
Hi, nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome. Move for approval?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And welcome. It's good to have you. Are there any more?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'd like to introduce to you our new addition to the tax office. This is Julie Paddock. Her first day was yesterday. She will be a full-time employee and will be entitled to full benefits.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Do we have any other new employee introductions? Hearing none. We'll move on to comments from the public. We are now open. Comments from the public, three minutes. State your name, and you have your minutes.
Good morning, Dr. Scott Meisess. Good morning, Commissioner. Shout out to you this morning.
Good morning.
I have two things, and again, I really appreciate the time that you've given me to talk about the Bartlett House and the working meeting that you planned. Mr. Shakur and I had talked a little bit about item F on your positions on vacancies and boards and authorities, and I've kind of mentioned to you all that I'm willing to serve were asked. And I've left you a copy of my CV, so you have a little better background. Tom knows me really well. You guys are still getting to learn me a little bit, but, and Tom's learned to tolerate me when I tease him a little bit. But that's what that's for, if there's a place that I can plug in and help, let me know. I am obviously pleased and very appreciative of how quickly you put together the working meeting, and I understand from one of the secretaries that it is an open meeting. And I didn't know it was going to be a, I just didn't know how you did working meetings, if they were closed or not. But if you have just a couple of seconds, I wanted to introduce a couple of friends of mine from the Bartlett House, Bruce and his woman partner, Stephanie. And I brought them in specific, no, I understand that you guys are well-educated, and you understand with Bartlett House, and you don't have a lot of the negative stereotypes that a lot of people do. But I'm proud to tell you that Bruce starts a job on Saturday, as compared to the unfortunate general perception of some people in the public, that people who are at the Bartlett House just don't want to work. He's more than happy to work. Been trying to find a job, and I know a lot of people have been trying to find a job. Stephanie here is also an example of another person at the Bartlett House. And in fact, I helped Stephanie make a report to the, whatever, what was it? Whoever covers disability laws and violations, because the, at least the current building at the Bartlett House has many violations, and we'll let them pursue their investigation in terms of finding out what's going on. If I may, don't want to take up too much time, actually, because they've closed the day part of the Bartlett House, that's really creating a major problem. And Bruce, why don't you come up here? Do you have time to just have him tell you what the difficulty is being?
Hello, gentlemen. Thank you for your time.
Good morning.
Like Scott was saying, preconceived notions of homeless people, for the most part, are half-right and mostly half-wrong. Because I've worked hard all my life. I've just had rough breaks. I'm not addicted to alcohol or drugs, and I have no problem being employed. She can't be, she can't motivate that well. She's got degenerative bone disease, diabetes, other health problems. And to a point, they've been so, they've done what they can, but being like Scott said, the facility is not set up for disabled people. It should be a lot more set up and more generous and more helpful to them, more understanding. Now they've closed the day room for 12 hours a day. We're out on the streets. I'm having to scramble without any money to find a way to feed this person who has diabetes. It could put her life in jeopardy, being in the heat, being on the street. We have to sit at sheets, and by the good graces of the manager there, we're allowed to stay there. But we're not supposed to be there. That's their company policy. It says, no loitering. You can be prosecuted under the fullest scent of the law. If a police officer was to come along, he could haul us both out of there. That's city law, apparently, right? So we're between a rock and a hard place. They're leaving us nowhere to go. They're trying to transfer us over to the West Run at night tour, but I think there's a little foot dragging going on. We should have been over there a week ago. And they're not going to allow us to stay together. I'm her full-time caretaker when I'm not working, and I feel if she was over there faster and sooner, it would relieve my mind to do my job when I'm on the job and not have to worry if she's okay. If she's fallen, nobody's there to help her or feed her. And it's a real concern, that things just don't move along at a better pace.
And so, by me, you can say, one of his biggest worries in the last, the job was a blessing, but it created a problem.
Yeah, at the same time, yeah.
Yeah, obviously, he wants to work and create income, but now, who's going to be with Stephanie? And where's she going to be?
And on the point of-
And we're trying, we're trying to work on that Bartlett Houseism.
Yeah, on the point of her, more, well, her personal welfare on her own, trying to manage, but there's also a lot of drug abuse, and there's a lot of alcoholics that come up there and hang out, which gives all the homeless a bad name. For the most part, a lot of those people want to go to work. They can't find jobs for whatever reason, bad credit, bad past, whatever. A lot of them are trying to do their best, but some of them don't want a life anymore. They're happy where they are. I say let them stay there, deal with them best they can, you know? Puts a load on the police department. A lot of these streets need to be cleaned up a lot better than they're being cleaned. The drug addicts down at that bus stop need to get out of there. They're scaring people half to death. And if it's not anything on the city, I know they've got a full-time job keeping them off the streets. But when they allowed to come into the Bartlett House at night, that's not providing a safe, secure place for them to be, for people like her. And I've gone as far as to invest in getting ceiling tiles in the men's bathroom. Last week alone, I found three used syringes up there. So it's not a good thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you both. Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to Colleen and Grant.
I don't have a ticket.
All right, nothing to report today. All right. Next, we have requests for qualifications for website design and development. Renetta, what do you have for us?
Is this like a process?
Okay. Okay. You sure you want me to have this? They are in Tri-Adelphia, West Virginia.
I have one from Mind Merge, M-I-N-D, M-U-R-G, and they are from Morgantown.
And I have two proposals, one from West Virginia Network, and they are located in Morgantown.
I have one I can't open.
And then I have another one from Revize, R-E-V-I-Z-E, and they are located in Troy, Michigan.
Detroit?
Troy.
Troy, okay.
Okay. And I have one from Civic Gage.
Civic Plus?
And Civic Plus. They are out of Manhattan, Kansas.
Wow.
Okay.
Has an interest.
Yes. We do have these proposals. I believe that we can review them and see whom we might look toward and possibly then put this out to bid, I believe would be the next process.
Well, this is, we did an RFQ, so these are requests for qualifications.
Yes.
We'll review those and probably pick the top three, two, three.
Interview?
And do an interview or ask for additional information.
All right. Sounds good. We'll divide these up later, okay? Put them in one common file here.
Thank you.
All right. Next, correspondence. Renetta?
Yes, sir. Received the annual financial performance report from Transit Authority from, for the month of May. This is in pursuit to our levy agreement with them and their receipt of levy funds. So that's available, if anybody would like to look at that. We also received a notification from the Public Service Commission of West Virginia regarding wireless E911 fees that are passed to the subscribers. The Public Service Commission has ordered that we will be able to raise the fee from $3 to $3.34 per subscriber.
Could I ask a question? I was skimming through it real fast. That money, that all goes to the state, correct?
No, those, those funds, part of it comes to the county.
So part of it will come, okay.
Yeah. It's, if you look at the last-
I'm trying.
What's the percentage of the 34 cents?
Yeah, that's what I was just trying to figure.
I guess that's the question.
Yeah.
In other words, if we raise it, in other words, are we raising 2 cents for us? And, you know, is there a percentage there?
Yeah, I'm looking to see where, I don't know where that's at. Let's see, 5%. Okay, $1 million is placed in a fund each year to subsidize the construction of wireless towers. So that's kept by the state.
Okay.
10 cents of the amount collected per subscriber is distributed to the state police to be used for equipment upgrades for improving and integrating communication efforts with enhanced 911 systems. 5% of the fee is allotted to the Division of Homeland Security Emergency Management to use for construction maintenance upgrade of the inoperable radio project, and then the remainder of the money comes to the county commission.
So 85% of the raise of the 34 cents?
Yes.
Okay, then would be-
Yes.
For our local 911.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I, you know, is this effective July 1?
Um, yes.
So if we place this on the agenda for the next meeting, then we could go ahead and make this a, and, and that's, that's okay.
It's, okay.
Good. I mean, since it benefits us locally as much as it does, I believe that we should assist 911 as much as we possibly can.
Yes.
Any other correspondence?
Um, no.
Okay. Well, any unfinished business? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. Number one, consider issuing a request for qualifications for architectural slash engineering services for the Master Planning and Design slash Construction Administration of renovations and or replacement of the pool at Camp Muffley. I wrote a grant to the Hazel Ruby McQuain Foundation, and they were gracious enough to gift us with $25,000 for this. It would be a plan to be developed if, to be followed if money were found by way of more grant, and there is money, of course, in the levy that would assist the pool. But this way, the plan would already be in place. In other words, you wouldn't have to start from square one if we have the plan made. And I thought, well, let's look about possibly seeing if we have people who have an interest or qualifications to be able to do this for us, so.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Were you all able to review the dates that are on the bottom of the RFQ?
Who provided input for those?
Um, I'm sorry, what did you say?
How did, how did you arrive at those dates?
Just in publication or, you know, to do the publication, and then a two-week interval in between each, between the submission. No, I just came up with the dates. I didn't, nobody threw them out.
It's roughly a monthly.
Okay. And the only other question I would have is if it doesn't have any sort of a pre-proposal meeting? So like someone could, they could be brought to-
No, because we're just doing a request for qualifications.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they, do they need to see?
I mean, there are-
An expression of interest, so.
Yeah, expression of interest. There are a lot of individuals who could put in a pool.
Okay.
But how many do we have who have an interest and qualifications to actually design, not just the pool, but the, you know, the company that's around it? So that's probably the biggest issue.
Okay, are you, are you okay with the date?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and get that over to the newspaper then?
That'll be fine.
Okay.
Good. Okay. Next, consideration of a letter of support for the Montague County Solid Waste Authority 2017 REIT grant proposal.
I received a request, and we discussed it at the work session. I'd appreciate, and, and it's for to help get better data about recycling participation, availability, and effectiveness, and it's always better to get more information to make better decisions.
Yes.
I would ask if, I would make a motion to approve it and then ask that it be read into the-
Second.
All right.
Renetta, may I?
Okay, it's, you want to read it?
Oh, okay.
It's short.
Yeah. Dear Mr. Helmut, the Montague County Commission supports the Montague County Solid Waste Authority's 2017 REIT grant proposal to collect recycling data across the county. It will be very helpful for the county commission and other local entities that are engaged in recycling operations to having better data regarding recycling participation, availability, and effectiveness. We will work with the Solid Waste Authority to allow access to drop-off recycling participants for surveys that will fit into our traffic flows without disrupting the recycling operations. Thank you sincerely, Ed Hawkins, President, Mont County Commission.
It's been properly moved and seconded to give us letter of support. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, to consider signing the master service agreement between Highmark West Virginia Inc. and the Montague County Commission for the Group Health Insurance Renewal Date of August 1, 2017.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Consideration of a letter of support for the Mon Valley Greenspace Coalition's grant proposal to the National Park Service for Greenspace Planning. I'm going to suggest that no action be taken on this in that we were not given sufficient information regarding, and the individuals who asked to be on this agenda were not available for us to have the information given to us to make this decision, so.
I'm in total agreement.
It's not a negative, as they both know, but just simply, okay?
No action.
Yes, no action. Next, consider a resolution of support for the Montague County Development Authority's grant application for the Chaplain Hill Road Extension Project.
And I'm scrolling through to get to it.
That's okay.
There's a lot of pages.
Sorry, that agreement before was a little large. And what this is, is the Development Authority is applying for a grant for a road extension, and they have a June 30 deadline, and they're applying for up to $400,000 in unmatched and $150,000 in matched industrial access road grants. So this is one of the last projects the Development Authority will have at the Chaplain Hill Project before turning it over to the Property Owners Association, so. I would move that we would accept and sign this letter of support.
Second.
All right, been properly moved and seconded to sign. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, to consider approval of the 2016 delinquent tax list as presented on June 14 by Sheriff Perry Palmer. I see he's here. Do you have anything to add to that?
No, sir, just your approval.
Okay.
Move for approval?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
The sheriff says move for approval.
Probably moved and seconded.
Do you want this back?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And lastly, consideration of workman's comp insurance carrier beginning for the year 2018.
We met with Fred Horton. He had two proposals. They were from Brick Street and Travelers Insurance. Travelers came in approximately $1,700 less. They do online reporting. He was, was able to confirm that to me, so, what's your wishes?
Provided that, we were, we were checking to see if they had the same qualifications as our previous vendor, and the, the two vendors were within almost a half a percent from each other, so I've moved to accept the, the recommendation.
From, so we would be going with Travelers?
Travelers.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept Travelers. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there any other new business? Hearing none, we'll move to reports from elected officials. Reports from elected officials. Mark?
Come on down. I wanted to present, it's that time of year again where we set up our satellites, our summer satellites in July and August, and just wanted to make sure that I gave a copy to you all for your records to have.
Thank you.
And as we've added some additional dates and new sites to our list for this year. So beginning next Wednesday, it usually kicks it off, and we do it at Morgantown High. It's our dad's, it's our third year there. During that Wednesday, 3 to 6, we've had great response from that area, plus, for one, it's accessible parking, and we have the neighborhood within South Park there that a lot of people come down, take advantage of that. So as you can see, I think there's about 22 dates there that we have for that for our summer satellite. So I'm going to make sure I get out there, Ben, I'll give you your copy there. And also, we have submitted stuff regarding our online filing. It's just a reminder that we do online filing for personal apartments, and so we put that up on our website, which is one of the other things I wanted to discuss, is we've been working on creating a new website for our assessor's office. We finally got some things done, so, given the opportunity, if you get a chance, go to theassessor.org, our website there, and give me your feedback when you get time from it, but it's turned out very nice.
Are these, just as a matter of course, are these identified? I mean, I see like Morgantown High School, that's a, is it identified as to where you might be at Morgantown High?
Uh, it's always the front of the building there on the side where they come in.
I see Health Sciences Building in Ashton Estates somewhere.
Yeah, and the thing is, what we did there was Health Science, and then Ashton Estates, we met with the people out there, and we're back on the Community Park side of that. For Health Science, what we did was, it's usually down by the cafeteria, because we're getting that crosswalk of staff coming through. Mon General, we do right in the front. And if you look at Mon General's side, what we've done is, we've done the back-to-back days and the times so we can accommodate for the midnight staff coming off duty, the morning staff coming in. We've also kept it open for any family members, and they have a loved one in the office, or even a patient in the office, if willing, they want to get their stuff submitted in there too, so. Actually, that has turned out extremely well on the Mon General side. So we're getting good response from that, but we're trying to get more neighborhoods and more of the subdivisions where we feel there's a captured audience right there also to make it more accessible. So that was the two things I really wanted to go over today with you all, is that, announcing our satellites there. Oh, and the fact of, thank you, sir, of our website there to take a look at.
Excellent.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff Palmer?
Just one thing real quick. This is for Ben, too. To make the public aware that starting July 1, the DMV has raised the registration fee from 30 to 5150, and even if your registration says 30 on it after July 1, you'll be paying the 5150.
And that would be 5250 if you do cash down here, just?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Any other reports from elected officials? Hearing none, I will move to the reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Okay, it's two quick ones. First, for those of us who were here on Friday, we, the community experienced a unique situation with a tornado. I first want to say thank you to the first responders and to 911. I mean, they had the information out. Someone must have been talking to the Weather Channel, because for 15 minutes, they murdered Montague County's words. They couldn't say Montague County. Every time they said it, it was a different way, but they were saying live, and, I mean, the communication was excellent. I talked with Bron, who, where it hit the crab shack, and they're already up and running again. But I just want to really thank the public, because when word got out that there was a serious situation, everybody took heed, and then everybody went out to help each other. So again, I want to thank everyone. The second situation, and Perry, I'm glad you're here. I wanted to talk to you before, and you'll know what I'm about to talk about. I know the sheriff's department went out. I happened to be at the front of the commission office when this young lady, Ruth Ann Cummings,[1784.32] I happened to be at the front of the commission office when this young lady, Ruth Ann Cummings, came from Brookhaven, who was concerned about the fireworks that the neighbor was shooting off in Brookhaven and landing on her house. I tried to listen. She wrote a great letter and tried to explain to her that, you know, we have no specific ordinances or laws, but, you know, that we would take into consideration, you know, what she said and the concern because I have a feeling you're probably going to get numerous calls. And Renetta, you did make a suggestion, one of the suggestions, because she's in that Brookhaven area, go ahead.
I don't know if they have a current homeowners association, but if so, then they, they would be able to make an amendment to their bylaws or covenants to account for fireworks.
Is this just basically for around the 4th of July or they're going off all the time?
Well, this happened, uh-
June 11th.
Yeah, June 10th or June 11th. And you did come out in the report and you did meet with the individual setting it off and they didn't have any more, but I'm sure it's probably happens in the summer.
It does.
And stuff like that. And again, I wanted you aware of it and, you know, we're going to look into it, but there is absolutely nothing in the law for the counties to do. I mean, she wrote a, you know, she was very appreciative that we listened. I think that's what she wanted to do and I guess the only thing that I would like to say is please use common sense. I mean, and it's more of a fire hazard. If you're using those things, you don't want to do it in a neighborhood that it lands on someone else's house. But I didn't want the others aware of it and she did write a letter and we'll, we'll respond back, but I did want to thank you because the sheriff's department did respond immediately and went out there. Thank you. And that's it.
All right, Sean?
Well, I don't have too much to, to report on, other than I've been working with Mark and Renetta's given me a lot of help on coming up with the discussion we're going to talk about this afternoon in regards to the sheriff's leasing program, not the sheriff, actually, if we look at leasing from a countywide standpoint. So I'm excited at least in regards to exploring that. I also met with Kerry, the clerk's office yesterday and followed up on the discussion I had when I first came in office about trying to build some intelligence into our, our WB, they don't call it WBS here, chart of account structure to, to add intelligence so that we can have better information in regards to where we're spending the county's money. So it was a very productive meeting yesterday and we'll have some, we'll have a first run of some additional sub-accounts that we've added and been trying to roll it out and, you know, for, as Kerry and I discussed, we, you know, all the elected officials can do their own thing, but it's something that can help everybody. So as we do it, we're hoping that maybe we can get adoption across, across the county because it really gives us a good idea. I mean, here's a perfect example. If I ask Kerry, you know, or Tanya, whoever's pulling a report, you know, how much paper are we using across the county? Well, you have to go and pull a report on each vendor and then discern what part of that's paper. And that's something, just, that's just a really easy, you know, example. So it may not sound important, but I mean, again, it could help us save a lot of time in pulling that information and then having that information at our fingertips whenever we need it. So we can always look at trying to find ways to better save, save more of the county's money. We have a meeting today, our first meeting to discuss, I'm on the committee to make recommendations for the new development director map, map, development director. So we have that meeting this afternoon, so that'll be right after our working session, so we'll first meeting on that. The last thing, I really appreciate your comments. I know sitting here and we're talking about fireworks and stuff probably makes, you know, seems so out there in compared to the stuff that you deal with on a daily basis. And we are having a discussion about issues in regards to Bartlett House. And any time that we can talk about the issues, the effect to homeless, we're certainly willing to listen, but I do appreciate you coming in.
I agree with you too. It's always like that.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. I will announce that I have been reappointed to the Metropolitan Theater Board, hopefully, and seeing what is, the action that's going to be taken by the city. This board will then have a more positive input in the direction that the theater takes. I think this is a exciting thing that is going to possibly happen. I did meet yesterday with Ryan Lynch of the Westbridge Development and was given a tour. Now, I've been requested by them to be their point of contact for county commission. Now, this isn't a commission issue, I think, that has to be on agenda, if it's okay with you two. It's more or less somebody to be present for the bid openings, to be, when, when the road construction or anything like that. So it was more ceremonial, I would say, than anything else, but with your commissioner's permission, I will tell them that, that hopefully, we, I do have a nice map of now what's, what's going on here. I only have one, but I'll be happy to, to share this information with, with anybody. The, the project, I was able to actually go on to the, the pad that's being developed on top right now, where you see the pine trees being planted. And it was, it's really something and some other pads that are currently, there's a lot, there's a lot going on right now and they're going to be coming before us, I believe, on a request, but I believe Ryan may be coming in with requests to be on the agenda just to give an update to all of us regarding what is transpiring. And I think possibly he might be, be able to come in next week, if that's okay.
Oh, fantastic.
I certainly have no problem with you representing us in that capacity and I appreciate.
Thank you.
Am I to contact him to set that up?
Please do so. Okay, I have his contact number.
I have his.
Okay.
All right.
Good. Hearing nothing else, move for adjournment?
So move?
Second.
Probably moved in second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you.